Okay, Sarah, we are ready.
Okay, great. Thank you all. It is 7:01. I'd like to call the meeting to order and start with roll call.
Councilmember Alps?
Here.
Councilmember Hupdi? Councilmember Taylor?
Present.
Vice Mayor Haskell?
Here.
Mayor Warner cough?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. And Catherine, is this the point where we need to go through the script because I'm joining remotely?
Yes, we are. This is the time. So I have the script here and I just sent it to you as well. So you have it handy. For the community, Mayor Warner cough is attending remotely. And so the Brown Act requires that we go through basically a script to ensure that everyone can hear the mayor and vice versa, and that we comply with all the procedures. So I'm going to go ahead and go through that right now. So for the record, Mayor Warner cough is participating remotely from the Hotel June, room number 225 in Los Angeles, California. That's 8639 Lincoln Boulevard, Los Angeles, California. And in accordance with the Brown Act, each teleconference location has been identified in the notice in the agenda for this meeting. I'll also note for the record that we have a quorum of councilmembers present in person. I'd now like to request that Mayor Warner cough respond to the following questions and confirm certain matters for the record. Mayor, can you hear me well?
Yes.
Were you able to hear the proceedings on this up until now?
Yes.
Do you have a copy of the agenda for the meeting?
Yes.
Great. And have you posted the agenda at the location where you are?
Yes.
Great. And is your location reasonably accessible to the public such that any member of the public could participate in this teleconference from your location if he or she wished to do so?
Yes.
And is there any member of the public there with you now?
No.
Okay. I'd now like to ask that any member of the council speak up if this time if the council member has not been able to hear Mayor Warner cough. Okay, hearing no comment, no concerns. The record will reflect that all councilors present have indicated they have been able to hear Mayor Warner cough clearly. I now like to advise the council that any votes taken during the teleconference portion of this meeting, basically the whole meeting, must be taken by a roll call. And you can move forward with the meeting now. Thank you.
Thank you, Catherine. That brings us to Agenda Item Three, which is the Town Manager Report. Sharif?
Thank you, Mayor Warner cough. Good evening, council. Just two quick updates, two important updates. Want to remind council and the community of the April 24th upcoming study session in regards to our finance update and state of the town, if you will. That study session is scheduled from 5:30 to 7:00. I did confirm today that if we do need additional time, we can continue if council decides to continue to that same night. So we have time to discuss if we run out of time on that day. But a very important presentation from myself and the Finance Department, along with George Savage and others regarding the state of the town, our three-year plan, if you will, where we are, where we're headed, and what we need to publish as a town. So stay tuned for that. Also, I do have exciting news that we're able to announce that we do have a building and planning director. Very excited to welcome Romeo Herrera. Romeo Herrera has an extensive background in building and served as chief building official and worked in housing and building in a few local cities such as East Palo Alto. And has worked on safety, collaboration, and community are some of the main themes of his work. He joins us coming from the city of Seaside, where he worked, works now as a building and code enforcement director and chief building official. He holds a master's in public administration with an emphasis in urban planning and public works, as well as a bachelor's in public administration. Romeo is very excited to get on board. He has been keeping tabs on us and knows what he is going to be involved with right out the gate. And he's excited to be here and he's excited to engage with the community, meet with our community members, meet with our residents, and getting to know staff and council. So we welcome Romeo. And his first day will be April 22nd, so coming up in very short order. So we're very excited. Obviously Romeo has an extensive background in building. And one of the pieces that was very appealing to us is that he's also a building official. And so we were able to have now an in-house building inspector, which can also help us on costs and continuity when it comes with consulting costs and customer service. And to that end, you may have heard me say in the past that we will also be enhancing the building and planning department by adding a planning manager. So we'll have our building and planning director, along with the planning manager to provide that service for residents and for us as we move forward on our housing element and all the different projects that we have coming down the pipeline. And so those are my two announcements. Thank you.
Thank you, Sharif. Any questions from the council? You guys are going to have to guide me. Sorry, I can't see. Here, see a no from Judith?
Or no question.
No questions. Okay. With that, we will move on to oral communications. Are there any hands raised in the schoolhouse?
No.
No?
None in the schoolhouse. We do have one online that you can see.
Yes, I see one online. Moving to Zoom, I see Dale Fow.
Yes. Yes, thank you very much for taking my comment this evening. I want to call your attention to the report from the Emergency Preparedness Committee, which got put in the public comment section for tonight's meeting a little bit late, so you may not have seen it, but please pay attention. This is an update to the evacuation study times that was done by Farron Peers in 2022. We have used Ladriss extensively and have now modeled the evacuation times based upon the additional housing that will come as a result of the housing element. No surprise, Portola Valley has an evacuation problem. And it just gets worse, of course, with the new housing. The upshot here is we continue to recommend very strongly that the town move forward as quickly as possible on the mitigation measures that were in the Farron Peers report and maybe others. That's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dale. I don't see any other hands raised on Zoom. I'm assuming there's none still in the schoolhouse. One hand just popped up on Zoom. I believe it's Carolyn Vertonghen.
Good evening. Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, councilmembers, for hearing my comments. Thank you very much for the emergency committee to present it. But as you know, public safety was was the goal for Portola Valley. And we believe we elected you guys for that reason. We not only wanted to have public safety, we wanted to have accountability and transparency. And I know we have to wait for the finances, but I have a feeling that we're getting behind on many issues and we're not making any progress. I hope you will promote save routes to school. We used to have this program. We've been working on it. We tried to work to improve it, but there's just a stagnation. The sheriff's contract was approved, at least the financial part. But unfortunately, now we're not getting any improvement with the sheriff's department. They promised us that they will meet with us. They promised us that they will give us the reports a week before, and nothing is getting done. So it's a huge disappointment, and I hope that somebody will start acting and bring this town back in order because we're way behind. Thank you.
Thank you, Carolyn. I don't see any other hands raised at this point, so I will close oral communications. Moving on to item, Agenda Item Number Five, the Consent Agenda. Does anybody on the council want to pull an item? Judith, I can only see you. So is there anybody there interested in pulling an item?
Yeah, this is Craig. I'd like to pull F, five F.
Five F? Okay. Would somebody like to put forward a motion for the remaining consent agenda items?
Mayor, please check for a public comment on the consent calendar.
Oh, thank you.
I will note there are no members of the public in the schoolhouse.
Okay.
Town staff.
Thanks for the reminder, Catherine. I do see one on Zoom. Rita Comas?
Hi, thank you for taking my comment. I just have some questions about item number C, approval of Town Manager Claims Authority. As we're trying to, you know, just do some transparency and some clarification on our finances. If these claims are then just approved or not approved without coming to the council, coming to the Finance Committee, you know, the town residents don't get to see what this is. And is there a lot of claims that come through the town that are under $25,000? Do we have a lot of claims against the town? That's news. And it should not be taken care of behind closed doors. You know, we already have issues with transparency and the finances. I really hope that this particular item goes a different process and not just approved or not approved behind closed doors. Thank you.
Thank you, Rita. Back to council. Is there anyone that wants to? I don't, by the way, I don't see any other hands raised up on Zoom for public comment on this Agenda Item.
I'd like to withdraw a B.
B?
Of item five.
Okay.
Warrant list?
The warrant list?
Yeah.
And I'm happy to ask a quick question on five C.
I'm sorry, five what?
E. It'll be a quick question.
On B, I'm sorry, I just couldn't.
B is in cat.
Okay. So are, okay, so we are now pulling B, C, and F?
I'll move approval. I'll move approval of items A, D, and E.
Second.
Roll call vote?
Councilmember Alps?
Aye.
Councilmember Hupdi?
Aye.
Councilmember Taylor? Vice Mayor Haskell?
Aye.
Mayor Warner cough?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Maybe let's take these in order. Mary, would you like to share your thoughts on item B?
Yes, I actually don't have any problem with the warrant list. So the, a problem I have is the way it's presented and whether at some point we could revisit the whole concept of bringing, of the way the warrant list is brought forward. And that's my full comment.
Okay.
I find it uncomfortable that these things have already, they haven't, we're saying that they're going to be paid, and then they haven't been paid. I'd rather just, it puts us all in an awkward situation where we really can't do anything. And it sounds like we're complaining if we object. And yet I think it could, we could just get the expenses after they've been paid. So we could, we could know what's happening right off. Instead of waiting until they hadn't been paid.
What change would you be looking for?
I'm looking for them not, not holding up the people, the people who are being paid until after we've okayed it.
I don't think that's, correct me if I'm wrong, I don't think that's what's happening.
Well, maybe Sharif could help me because I thought, I got it from our conversation today.
The warrant list is a list of items that we have not paid yet, right? That we're asking for authorization to get paid. So there is an inherent delay when we have to wait for a council meeting to pay vendors or clients or people. And so that there is a piece of awkwardness to a warrant list in general. And then when a warrant list item gets pulled in a public meeting, it automatically puts a microscope on it where it might not be the case, where you're just asking a simple question or clarifying question. So I understand where you're coming from.
Thank you. I wish I was more articulate.
Some towns do not. Some towns post their expenditures after the fact, and then you can ask questions after. And so there's, there's definitely.
That seems like a more fair and open way of doing it is to actually have it presented after it's paid. Just because otherwise it, the town has jeopardized its own ability to pay their bills.
Are you saying you, you are willing to? Your concern is making vendors wait.
Exactly, exactly.
And I don't know, maybe that's something we can look at if they're away to avoid vendors having to, or recipients of funds having to wait. I don't think we could sell that tonight.
No, I'm not asking for it. I just asking, bringing up the point that when I have asked about things on the warrant list, I hadn't realized it meant that potentially those people who had already done the work weren't going to be paid because I was asking. And that's, that's not, doesn't feel like fair business.
If there's consensus from council, I can certainly look at different options and bring that back to council for consideration.
Thank you.
I'm fine with you looking at it, I guess. I mean, I've been doing this way a long time, and I've never heard complaints about it. I mean, I haven't heard, I haven't heard the vendors complaining about it. And we can talk about something on the warrant list, it doesn't mean we don't pay it. And very rarely would we not pay something. I mean, the warrant list is sort of things we've committed to. It's not a budget. It's things that we've committed to in some way, shape, or form, and are just simply reviewing it so that we know that what checks are going.
I like knowing what checks are going out. And I think that's very important. But anyway, there's probably enough discussion about this. Just knowing what, I hadn't realized that was putting us in that position and that my comments were taken as sort of, with greater significance than they needed to be when I was just asking for information.
Okay. All right. So is there action here? Are we requesting?
No.
Okay. Okay.
Motion to approve. Five B.
Second.
Okay, roll call vote?
Councilmember Alps?
Aye.
Councilmember Hupdi?
Aye.
Councilmember Taylor?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Haskell?
Aye.
Mayor Warner cough?
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right, thank you very much. Moving on to items, was it C? Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, just a quick question because I did have a question on it's one thing to have the authority up to 25,000, it's another to think that that happens 10 times a year. So can we give it some context about how often these claims come up, like in your experience or recent records?
So I will say I have now been with the town since May of 2023, and I can think of three claims that the town has received. One was a drainage issue. It's then turned into litigation. The council is aware of that one. Another one was a trip and fall. Another one was a bike accident. But not, but no major injuries is more the, the claim was regarding the bicycle itself. So they're fairly in free plans. And every time the town receives a claim, it's not just town staff that reviews whether to approve or reject the claim. It is actually, we use our insurance fund, the Plan JPA, and they assign an insurance adjuster to the claim, which reviews it, investigates it, asks for information, and then makes a recommendation regarding whether to approve the claim or reject the claim. And so if the town manager has authority, it would then likely just follow that. It's under $25,000. The town manager would then just follow the recommendation of the insurance adjuster. I'm sure, you know, basically barring unusual circumstances. But if the claim were more than $25,000, then that recommendation will be brought forward to council for approval regarding whether to confirm or reject the claim.
So the checks and balances are, I assume you would be involved.
I'm involved in everyone.
And the insurance and Sharif. And Sharif, I'm going to put words in your mouth, disagree if you will, but if you saw six claims coming in two months, you would come back and apprise us of a material different development.
I would, absolutely.
Yeah. Okay. I'm comfortable with that then. Most, unless others have.
Yeah, so I had just one other question related to that. Is there a public record of this anywhere? Like, is there a place that we can see that there were three? Because I don't think I need to be involved in the approval process. That's fun. But I'm just wondering, does it show up anyplace?
Every claim itself would be a public record. I don't know, I'm sure you have any other thoughts in terms of where else it shows up?
I could certainly report back, you know, on a biannual basis or something to state to council where those claims are, and this quarter I've received this many or something to that nature is more than fine. That's easy because it's so small. I've had, I've seen two come across my desk, right, in the nine months that I've been here, so.
Yeah, I mean, my feeling is sort of biannually, something, I don't need like every time it happens, that's fine. But it seems like biannually would be good. Just, I think it sort of did you to this point, like if you say there's three, it's kind of okay. And if you say there's 10, it'd be like, maybe I want to better understand why there's that many. So yeah, if we could do that, that would be great.
That makes sense. We can do that.
So I don't know the right time, maybe the fiscal year or just after fiscal year or something, you know? Pick a time where we just turn it into a regular cadence.
Okay, we'll do.
All right. Any other?
If there are no other comments, I will move approval of item five C.
Second.
Oh, good, you're on it.
Roll call?
Councilmember Alps?
Aye.
Councilmember Hupdi?
Aye.
Councilmember Taylor?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Haskell?
Aye.
Mayor Warner cough?
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right. Last item, item F. Craig, I believe that was you?
It was, thank you. So Sharif, could you explain a little bit more like how we go about deciding what these cost increases are? Do we have a policy? Should we have a written policy that's consistent? I mean, it seems like there's a lot of different things that could happen here. Can you help me better kind of understand this?
The answers are yes, no, and we do have an annual practice of providing a CPI for staff every year. That practice is not written per se, and so we do need a written practice moving forward. The standard practice that has happened in the past is the CPI Bay Area. There have been times where that has changed in the past. It's also not always been in April. Sometimes it's been in October. So I think we do need a written procedure moving forward on how we achieve this CPI. But the annual CPI, that is something that's common standard practice and is past practice here in the town of Portola Valley. So what's before you today is the recommendation of the CPI increase for staff based on the national average, which is, or a blend of the CPI of 2.4% for Bay Area versus the 3.2% for the national average. So the recommendation is 3% tonight. In the future, what I'd like to see, obviously beyond a written policy, is also committing to making sure that the month is consistent. The metric itself is consistent. And then if we have to, because we're unique in that we don't have unionized staff here, have some sort of cap and floor, if you will. You could say we will provide a CPI to staff with a cap of X amount, X percentage, and a floor of X percentage. So you don't, aren't so volatile in your swings. For example, last year's CPI was 5.8%. Before it was 5.2%. Depending on what month you pick, some towns and jurisdictions got a 6% or 7% CPI increase, which is, becomes difficult financially at some time. So there is definitely room here for making this a standard practice with a written procedure.
So yeah, so I guess I'd like to encourage that. That does seem like the right thing. And our unwritten practice so far has been Bay Area CPI?
Yes.
Okay.
In most cases, it's been Bay Area CPI.
Okay, and so, and that was 2.4 this year? And you're proposing something slightly less than national, but something more than Bay Area CPI?
Correct.
And that, as I understand from the staff report, that's about $10,000. So, so I guess I don't have a problem with that. I'd like to see consistency. So, you know, I think my initial reaction was we should just follow our past practice. $10,000 is not, you know, is not a huge number to me. So I'm, I think I'm willing to go along with this, but I guess what I'd like to see in addition is that we do in the relatively near future, come up with that written policy. And like you say, pick a month and pick a, pick an, you know, pick an index that we're going to use. And then I like the idea of putting a range on it that seems reasonable, just from a budgeting point of view, to keep it from getting kind of wildly out of line.
Sounds good. I think we can definitely add that to the next race as we move forward, is have that attached policy.
My thought was having a, first of all, I had a point of question of clarification. How many years have we been doing a cost of, an increase for a cost of living? And next, is it really gone as high as 8% in the past?
It depends on what month you pick.
For us?
For us, no. No, we have not, we have not picked it.
Okay, great.
But depending on what month you picked last year, or what town or city, or what your union negotiation was with your group, it could, could have gone as high as, I think, 6.8, 7.
I see. Okay.
This is all based on the CPI because of the COVID.
Yeah, some of the, some of the, something has worked well for me in the past is doing a five-year running average so that people are not surprised by the huge switches.
Right, right. We do have in the staff report that the running average is 3.75% in the past, so. And this has been press practice for as long as I.
We've been doing this as long as I've been on the council. I agree, we're probably overdue for a policy, which would include sort of a standard month, a standard index, and a standard range we're going to follow in. I, because it came up with staff earlier, now it's coming back to me. In 2020, we chose August instead of February because it was the COVID year and February inflation was relatively low and February inflation shot up later in the year. This is my best memory of it, but we chose a later index because it felt more accurately reflected the year worth of inflation. So typically we chose in February because it's kind of happened just before we're doing this COVID assessment. I think it makes as much sense as any month on this one, but if there's no other comments, then I will move approval of item five.
Five F?
F, excuse me.
I second it.
Roll call?
Councilmember Alps?
Aye.
Councilmember Hupdi?
Aye.
Councilmember Taylor?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Haskell?
Aye.
Mayor Warner cough?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Great. Thank you, everybody. Moving on to the regular Agenda Item Number Six A now. Looks like Adrian, you are getting into place to present this item.
Yes, she is. Her mic is off.
Got it. Thank you.
Good evening, council. Adrian Smith, I'm the senior planner with the town. I worked with consultant Chris Takumos from Good City to prepare this APR. He's helped the town in the past two years. So we asked him to help us out again this year. In terms of the structure, it should look pretty similar to past years, how I've probably put the staff report together. What I did a little bit differently this year was change the table in the staff report to correspond directly to the actual APR summary data, which is on Sheet B. So that's the actual summary that pulls in all the data. It's an automated sheet. We don't actually do any data entry. The two sheets that have the most data that we're actually keying information in is A and E2. Sheet A is a general overview of all applications. And my understanding from HCD is they're just trying to get a sense of the general activity in town. And then when you look at Sheet A2, that's the actual projects being put into place. So some sort of action, whether it's a certificate of occupancy or a building permit. So that's why we have the two different sheets. And then sometimes you'll see the same project in Sheet A and A2. Because, for example, because, for example, state, state ADUs that don't have any discretionary review, they're just a building permit, so you'll, you'll see them in sheet A, and then you'll see them again in sheet A2, and that's normal and expected. So other than that, I think that's just a sort of a brief overview. If anybody has any questions for me, I'm happy to go through it.
Who, who wants to start? Well, so Adrian, you weren't going to be presenting the table at all, that was in the packet, so we should just drop, dive into questions on that.
Sure, unless you want me to get into some detail.
Go ahead, Judith.
I think it would be helpful if you just went through what each table represents, like you did A and A2, but it, it wasn't clear to me what each table was responding to in terms of a requirement by HCD, so it would be helpful, very high level for me.
Sure.
But then we also have all the programs too.
Exactly, yeah.
Right, so once again, yeah, sheet A is just a general snapshot of all application activity in town, so that includes even an application for planning entitlement. It hasn't necessarily even proceeded to discretionary review yet, it's just an application. So that's sort of a, that's why it's a longer list, it's just activity. And then sheet A2 is act, you know, what applications have translated into actual units. Then HCD considers that a form of readiness, they call it. And so you would either get official entitlement, or if you have a building permit issued, or if you have an occupancy issue, occupancy permit issued, those are all forms of readiness and translate into actual units in the eyes of HCD. And then, so, and then as I mentioned, sheet B is a summary, so it's actually pulling information in and showing us our, our progress in each of our income categories for our assigned RENA. And then the, there's the housing programs table itself, where we need to report on how we're doing, if anything's complete, if it's in progress. And so that's how we try to, to spell out the status there, to be clear if it's complete or if it's in progress. Or if it hasn't started at all, then you won't hear, you won't see either of those. And generally, anything that's, that's further out, we haven't, we have not had the time to get started early on any program, certainly not. That's the programs sheet, and then we do have LEAP reporting because we qualified for a LEAP grant, we haven't actually made that claim yet. So I actually, I spoke to HCD and I asked, should we fill this sheet out? Because we haven't made a claim for the funds yet. And they said, no, you don't have to, but we, we populated it anyways, just to show. And we indicated that town has not submitted for LEAP reimbursement, so.
Can you tell us what LEAP reimbursement is?
So that was a, there's different forms of, of grants that you can apply for, and so we decided to, you have to spell out the tasks in your application for which you expect to be hoping to get reimbursement for. And so this goes back to, I think, '22, I'd have to look back at the application date, I didn't, I didn't handle the application, I think it was done by a consultant and then our former director. So we made an estimate at the time, what our tasks would be, and then the associated amounts. And so we successfully did use those monies, and we would like to get full compensation for those tasks that we're hoping for. The grant, by the way, is for $65,000, so it's not the full amount.
But are we, are we eligible for that when we're out of compliance with our housing element?
Well, we haven't made the claim right, yet. So I, I, I don't know the answer to that question, but I suspect that we would probably have to be in compliance before we submitted our claims.
Yeah.
And, and yeah, those, so those are the, the key sheets that we pulled out of the actual APR. There's a multitude of sheets, many of which don't apply to the town, and so we just leave them, we don't input any information.
And you call, you call them sheets, not tables, and yet in this, in this, they're called tables?
Yeah.
Okay, just so I'm on the right page, so to speak, these are the tables that you're talking about?
Yes, pardon me, I'm thinking in my mind is the Excel book itself.
Yeah, the sheets, yeah, I know about sheets, yeah.
Yeah, but as the attachments, you're right, I'll start referring to them as table, table A, table B, yeah, that's, that's much more clear.
I just thought it was a little vague.
And then, of course, what we're basically being held to account for is how we're proceeding with our RENA allocation. And so that's what the, the chart actually shows in the staff report, and that's consistent with table B. And one thing that might be new this year is that there's a lower table that says income category extremely low. Typically, we haven't broken that one out in past years, but I wanted it to be consistent with what table B actually shows, and so there'd be no confusion what the information is. So extremely low income units are actually rolled into very low. So when you see 37 units, it's just 50% of low. And there is some discussion about that in the housing element. We were actually going through the housing element update process, and the ad hoc housing element committee was working through everything. We generally just referred to our key categories of very low, low, moderate, et cetera, but extremely low is folded into very low. So it's not an additional number, it is part of our overall allocation of 253 units.
And why is it broken out? Is it because of the, the report that you need to submit? They ask for that even though it's assumed in very low?
Yeah, it, I think it's a little, it's just a quirk of how HCD does their APRs, because if you look at table B, the summary of our RENA progress, that's how they do it, and so I just, I didn't want it to be confusing at all for readers.
Out of curiosity, what type of units are those two?
So they are coming out of ADUs. And we don't have an ADU affordability program right now. We have plans to create such infrastructure in the future so that we'll actually be reporting on actual affordability of units. We'll be able to track that information, report it accurately, but for now, we don't have that in place. And so we're making use of the affordability ratio that ABAG and, ABAG has established, and then HCD has blessed. And so HCD has said, yeah, you can use this allocation for the first two years of your cycle, which towns like us need because we don't have our programs in place yet. So that's where you're getting those units from, it's just formulaic based on the affordability ratio assigned to ADUs.
Okay, so in your report, you summarize what's in a sheet down below for actual submittal, so then the, the name of the program, you go program by program. Are there any things in here that you anticipate surprise, shock? You know, any, anything that we should be aware, we should be tracking? And it's okay to say no, because we have a lot going on in town. I'm just kind of curious how to think about that chart in terms of giving you feedback.
When you say surprise or shocking, you mean something that we don't think we can fulfill, something like that?
Yeah, or, or something that didn't go according to plan, or is all this pretty much as anticipated?
Yeah, so far, yeah, so far it's just as anticipated. I mean, you know, we really only submitted in January, we're really just getting going.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
So other questions from the council? Mary, I can't see you, but do you have a, looking down at?
Sorry, I'm just, sorry, thank you. I, I did have a question about the LEAP, and partly a thought from Sarah. Is the reason, why didn't we ever submit? Was that because we don't, can't submit if we are, our audits are not up, are they aware of our financial situation, HCD? Or does that matter to them? That, do, could they, could we submit for the LEAP funds?
My understanding is that the actual agreement that HCD required the town to sign off on came very late because HCD themselves can't, are having trouble staying staffed, they've had a lot of turnover, and so they're behind on the grant administration aspect of it. I wish I had a little bit more detail, but our consultant was corresponding back and forth on our behalf. But that's my understanding, you let me know that HCD is, is quite behind to begin with.
But we haven't submitted.
No, but we haven't.
Yeah, so we don't.
But I don't think they even would have been.
Ready.
Ready to reveal our submission, that's my understanding.
So I have a question. Did you happen to see the public comment from the developer at Willow Commons that came into our packet?
I scanned it briefly.
Okay, I just wondered if you could comment on it. I was wondering, you know, there's, there seemed like there was a theme throughout about not making it easier for a developer to move this stuff forward, which I'm pretty sensitive to, I mean, if we're going to meet our RENA numbers, we've got to find some way, and clearly, objective standards and all that are part of that. So I was wondering if you could talk a little bit about what was going on with the sewer issue? It sounded like we had completely conflicting, like West Bay had one set of requirements, we had something else, and, and I'm just imagining, if I'm a developer, that I'm put in this situation that's untenable.
I definitely don't want to speak out of turn, I'm not the project planner for that one. So I, I really shouldn't answer that, because I, I don't have the details. I'm not sure what he's encountered, what struggles he's encountered, whether or not the town plays a role in that, or if it's West Bay that he needs to be doing, I'm not really sure.
Okay, thank you.
May, is there a process already in place to catch? Like, if, if we had everybody that we need for the housing element, how do we link up a requirement, commitment in our housing element with potentially conflicting other regulations, laws, rules? Like, if you don't know, that's fine, but I guess what, what kind of steps do we need to be taking going forward in order to identify these and be more proactive? Because it sounds like this was identified through an unfortunate experience, and, you know, I, I appreciate the report, but, but, you know, are there obvious things that we can be doing or planning to do in the near future to streamline? I think following on Craig's concept of how can we learn from this?
So this has to do with the public comment?
Yes, yes, and, and it's okay to say you need to think about it, I, I'm not looking for a commitment right now, but if anything, like, if, if there's already a process in place to identify those, I'd kind of want to know about that, maybe there can be a report back, and if not, how do we put one in place that's work, workable?
It's hard to answer that in, in a simple way, because his comments were quite wide-ranging.
Okay.
Some had to do with content of the housing element, some are post-entitlement processes and construction, like, it was.
Complex project.
Yeah, so there's, and, and some of them, I could speak to some, I cannot. But certainly offline, if you, if you'd like to point me to certain comments you made, and I can do some research.
Sure.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, and just to be clear, the thing I'm looking for is that, you know, we may or may not enter the specifics, I mean, that, that's within the, as far as I'm concerned, within the planning department. But as it relates to the housing element, and I think this is what Judith is getting at there as well, is I would like to see this kind of feedback come back in so that we modify stuff to make sure that we meet the programs that we committed to here. And, and this is at least one feed, you know, one data point that says some of these things, we're not doing a very good job of helping developers meet the programs that we put in place to help them. So, so I just want to make sure that there is a, that this feedback loop closes, that we take these comments, figure out what's appropriate, and then make those appropriate changes, which is a little different than we're going to address this letter. That's not specifically what I'm looking for, I'm looking more for how do we make sure that when we have an annual report like this, that each time it's getting better, and that we don't get like developers saying, well, yeah, you say these things, but can't get anything done. So that's, that's what I'm hoping for, and, and I'm going to stop now because it's starting to get into discussion rather than question, so apologize for that.
Yeah, it wasn't, as I said, I didn't have a lot of time, so I just scanned his, his, his letter. It's not clear, you know, there was a multitude of comments addressing different things, it's not clear to me that he, his comment letter was necessarily contradicting the APR. I think he was just using that as a jumping off point to, to raise some concerns.
Are there any other questions in the?
Mary might have one.
Well, I've been working on my, my good question here, sorry. It was, the question had to do with participation, and this maybe is not important, but 1-5, why would we outsource that? Why can't the town do that more, more inexpensively and, and more effectively? I just didn't understand it.
This is participating.
Why would the hip housing take care of our home sharing program?
Oh, because they have extensive experience in, in matching residents with those with housing needs. So they have an, an infrastructure already in place, so they'd be great partners to work with. They could connect us to people potentially outside of the community that would like to live here. So it's just a really good resource.
It's a resource.
Contacts, exactly, yeah, it just makes good sense to, to work with a program provider that already knows how to do this.
And you think people in town are going to be excited about having somebody from, provided by hip housing in their house?
Yeah, because I think it's a good matching resource. I think a lot of the times, there are residents in town who are looking to find a certain type of renter in a certain circumstance, but they don't know how to find them, and so this, this will be a good resource.
It seems to work.
I believe we've had these in the town, I'm pretty sure that handful of people placed here, because somebody's looking to, let me have, basically someone help them pay.
And is, is it paid by, as a percent of rent, or is it, how's it, how's it paid?
They're not for profit, I don't think, I'll, we'll have to look into that.
It's just a matching program.
Yeah, yeah.
Hip, hip is nonprofit, they, they have a, they basically have a network where they match people looking for housing with someone who maybe wants to, like a large house.
And it's been successful.
I mean, that's already in our housing element, I mean, this is already approved too. Yeah.
And we also have had a relationship with them of some nature for several years, from my recollection.
That's right.
Is that right, Adrian?
That's right, yeah, but now we're, we've made a commitment in our, in our housing element, and we have a lot more units to produce, so I, my expectation is for it to be a more robust relationship.
My other question was on 4-4-4, that you establish and implement the Affordable Housing Fund policy. It's actually, I think we call it the Inclusionary Housing Fund. So, I mean, I didn't know whether that needed to be corrected or not.
Okay, I guess.
But that document needs to be fin, as, as we've discussed, it needs to be finalized and posted.
Right, on my list for next week, as discussed.
But I think that title needs to be corrected.
Well, we won't be able to do it in the housing element, but I can make sure that, moving forward, we have the correct terminology. Thank you.
Are there, are there any other questions? I have some questions, but I'm trying to wait for all the other council.
Love for it, Sarah, go.
So Adrian, one thing I wanted to make sure I heard you right, so right now, we're using, going back to table A, right now, we are using the, the ABAG-HCD allocation that has been blessed by ABAG and HCD, but what I thought I heard you say is that after two years, that will no longer be allowed? Can you elaborate on that? Because that will be a huge change, because pretty much everything that's in there that I can see, I don't think is really truly at the income categories as it's being represented. And so I just want to make sure everybody understands that, and how, how big of a difference that will be if that's happening after year two.
Could you explain whatever she said?
Yeah, so ABAG and HCD has allowed jurisdictions to use an affordability allocation. So when we get ADUs that are approved in town and constructed, how do we determine at what level they're being rented out at? So when we get ADUs that are approved in town and constructed, how do we determine at what level they're being rented out at? We don't know because we don't have a program to track that information currently. So what A-BAG has allowed is like an allocation. So it's like thirty, 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 ten, thirty, you know, extremely low, very low, thirty, like, you know what I mean? So we're, we're able to just, so when we drop the ADU units into our table, we go through and we just allocate the first one, you know, based on how many units.
Mm-hmm.
This one will go under extremely low. There's no thought to it because it doesn't matter really because we don't have the information. What we just need to do is assign the affordability based on the allocation that we've been permitted to use. So that's why they appear that way.
So the change is gonna make it even less advantageous for us in two years?
We'll have to see what happens when we, when we actually have an ADU affordability program in place and we have real data to go by. Um, and I think, for example, our partnership with hip housing will be important, very valuable at that point to make sure that we are serving uh extremely low income households that need housing.
Is the two, it's two years and then you can't rely thirty, 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 ten anymore?
Right.
But we, was that the case during the housing element discussions? Did we know about that or is that something new?
Well, actually, we established our own affordability ratio that we included in the housing element. But then when A-BAG came out with this one and it was like a general accepted one, we thought, let's go for that for our first two years.
So it's been baked in for a while. You, you, we've been aware of a two-year timeframe for a while.
I want to say about three or four months ago, we found out that we could, we could use this ratio. Twenty-one elements are.
In my, in my experience, when we were going through the Ad hoc Housing Element Committee, it was a question. We didn't know when they were gonna change their approach from this allocation to actually keeping track. Um, and it's based on what I heard um Adrian say tonight is that they have made that decision and it is in two years. So we just finished, we have more, one more year of that approach is my understanding now. And after that, it will go to truly looking at it, which, you know, I, it will be a very, very significant change.
It'll be embarrassing.
So um, there's that. So, and then, so my next question is related to the timelines that are in the programs and HCD enforcement. So when I look through um, you know, all the programs listed there and our column of when we said we would do certain things um, March, you know, through the fall in particular, um, you know, there's a, there's um, you know, I won't read them all, but there's at least ten of them that have deadlines coming up um, between March and September. Um, a significant number of them having to do with ADUs, which is a huge amount of work. And so my question is um, what do we know at this point about HCD enforcement around that? And should we expect that to also impact certification?
So we're not entirely certain on this particular point. We, what we do know is that for this cycle, HCD now has an enforcement division, right? So that is a significant change. So we should expect at the town that HCD will be verifying that these timelines are being met, they're gonna be looking at it. So they will be looking for us to make progress. I don't think they're gonna say, you said you would complete this program in March twenty twenty-five, you know, corrective action letter because you haven't. I think so long as we can report that we've established a working group and we've engaged such and such consultant or we, you know, like that we're taking it seriously and we're trying to make progress. I don't think it would be a good look if we hadn't made any progress by the time we were expected to have completed the program or to have reached a certain accomplishment or goal. Cause some of them are multi-staged. We expect to do one thing by one month, six months later, another thing. Um, but it was challenging to establish these timelines because it really is our, an estimate and our best guess. So I know that's not a great answer. We don't know is ultimately what it is, but I think it's incumbent upon us to do our best to, to push our programs forward and make progress.
Okay, um, and then, sorry guys, I do have quite a few questions on programs, so um, thanks for your patience with me. Item two dash three, um, I was unclear. It says develop repository in twenty twenty-four. Is that the same? Can you clarify what that repository is?
Yes, that's tied to the post-adoption housing plan.
Okay, I wasn't, I wasn't sure if that's, so that's, that's uh T1 essentially.
Uh, the repository is T8, I think.
Well, this is a different repository, I believe. The, the repository for the town is T8, but this is referencing a different, this is, if you read through it there, it's um.
Oh, yeah, I don't think it's one dash one, but yes, that. Where are we?
We're on uh, on the program slash item two dash three.
That's what I thought. Yeah, continual evaluation. So yes, um, let's get to it. But yeah, you're, there's a couple of things that could tie into it. One dash one, the item we're looking to approve later i- is one of them, yeah.
So that's um twenty twenty-four. And then um, let's see, on, I missed one. On two dash two, implement inclusionary housing requirements, is that part of the zoning that's going on right now or how is that defined?
No, that's not part of zoning.
Okay. So what is this?
So this is a, a separate effort to actually have some sort of program in place to manage our affordable units. Cause we don't have any kind of infrastructure in place right now. So that's something we're gonna be pursuing, but it's outside of zoning.
Okay, so it's how we're gonna manage our affordable units, but we don't have, so, so the deadline for that is in September, which will be upon where we know it, so, but we don't have any. So I'm just a little confused on what's the expectation here? Like how, how is this gonna be defined?
You mean because we don't have affordable units currently to, to manage? Is that what you mean?
Yeah, so we're developing a fro- it says develop a program to manage new affordable housing units in town.
Right.
Um, and it's in September, which is, you know, not too, too far from now. So we're def- if you could just, what do you, what is the vision for what this would mean? What type of, how would you define this?
Well, we are going to be working with a, with a consultant on this. Um, it's actually through twenty-one elements. There's uh, you guys must, you might remember this from a previous uh staff report. We came to council to see if we could have support to join. We were gonna join at a partial, do you recall that?
Yes.
And so that's, because we can't do this by ourselves. We just don't have, we don't have the expertise or the staff here. And so that's where we're gonna get that support to actually, because they, they actually have affordable housing specialists. And so we're gonna get a certain number of hours to work towards this goal. And the idea is we really should have a program in place before the units come online. But that's what we're trying to do is work ahead.
So this would be a program, for instance, for if Ford Field goes forward?
Yes.
Would it, is it relevant to any other units or is this just relevant to Ford Field?
If I, if I could, um, I might also suggest um, uh, the Stanford Portola uh Terrace Project has uh below market rate units um that are required as part of our inclusionary requirements. And so I, if I'm correct, if I'm wrong, Adrian, but I believe um this program could also help uh manage those units.
Yes, that's correct.
That's right, thanks for calling that out. Um, all right, I'll save the rest for discussion on that one. Um, for um, three dash one, um, June twenty-fourth is one of the deadlines. What, what's the, what's the commitment that we need to meet for June twenty-fourth?
So that's to hold discussions with Ladera Church.
Okay.
It's just discussions, we should be able to accomplish that.
Okay. You guys haven't, ha- have there been discussions with Ladera yet? I know, I know they've attended the meetings, but.
Right, yeah, no, we haven't had any targeted discussions with them for some time. I think the last time we were chatting with them was talking about unit potential and them participating as a housing site. So this goes back to when we were drafting the housing element.
Okay.
I, I, I also would uh have a question about the way three one is worded because it doesn't even mention the Ladera Church a lot. And, and.
It does in the third column or the last column.
In the last column, but it, it's uh.
Well, it's because it's part of the gateway.
Objective, it doesn't mention it under the objective part. It just mentions Dorothy Ford Field. Could we possibly add in Ladera Church property?
This um, it's best to actually consult the housing element proper because then it includes all the program objectives. So the chart you're seeing is just a simplified version, just so the staff report wouldn't be wildly sprawling.
Okay.
Okay, um, on item three dash two, um, what, do we have a vision for what, what this process will be?
It's, it, I wouldn't say it's fleshed out at this point, no.
Okay.
Um, but what we want is to make sure that our nonprofits and religious institutions have the, the time from staff that they need. Um, and just if they have any technical questions, we just want to make ourselves available to them to, to facilitate as best we can. So we're just, we made in sort of an estimate of doing monthly meetings. Um, you know, including any relevant town staff members, like town geologists, if we need, if we need them to be there. So we're just trying to put that into place. And then of course, if, if we can add um participants to affiliated housing program, encourage development under affiliated housing, we'll take that opportunity as well.
Okay, um, my next question is on item five four. Um, it mentioned this is ongoing. Have we received any? And how is this process kind of different from what the routine one would have been?
Yeah, well, that's exactly it. So you know, it's kind of funny, some of the programs that we have in here are at times a restatement of something that already exists. And be that as it may, HCD wants us to make the statement and the commitment, even though we are legally obligated in some cases to already carry out a certain action. Um, so yes, you are gonna see instances of a restatement of, of a process that already exists.
Okay, so this is already in existence and we just have to restate it for the programs. But is it correct that we have not, I'm assuming we have not received any?
This is.
Five four.
Projects exempt from CEQA within thirty days, that, that's what you're asking?
Yeah. We haven't any, had any big projects, obviously, other than.
No, that's right.
Okay. Um, let's see, sorry. Um, item six six. Um, isn't that ongoing? It says initiate program. I'm curious, does this dovetail with the work that has been ongoing?
What work, what ongoing work are you thinking of?
Um, related to the ordinances, um.
Wildfire communities.
Jeff, I'm curious, I, I, I'm sorry, not Jeff, Craig. Um, I'm curious for your, like, to me, this, my question is, you know, it seems like this kind of outreach is ongoing from Woodside Fire. Is this saying, I'm just trying to kind of assess what, what, what is falling on the town versus Woodside Fire? Um, this seems like it's outreach from Woodside Fire and um, I just wanted clarity there, so we're not being redundant. Um, because it does seem like we're, we're already doing that, or Woodside Fire is already doing this and we're supporting them in those efforts.
Yeah, I would just add that I think, you know, the wildfire preparedness committee is certainly something that's within the town.
True.
You know, so we cer- certainly do that. We send out our, you know, monthly tips, wildfire tips and stuff. So um, in that sense, we may need to define exactly what the, what would mean by a program just to give HCD something, but we're clearly already doing that work.
Right, so I would say just if there's any opportunities for consolidation or incre- increasing communication, if we can offer a resource to Woodside Fire to help them distribute information, you can get them out to town events that we're having. So just to sort of streamline and make sure we're all on the same page. So I agree that efforts are already underway.
Okay.
Just sort of clarifying it.
Yep, and so on, I, yeah, I think, I just wanted to highlight that, you know, I think we have a lot going on there um versus needing to initiate the program. Um, moving on to seven, there's just a lot here about the ADU program. Um, I'm curious, you know, I'm assuming given our staffing situation and the fact that, you know, we are all hands on deck just to get the zoning done, that n- no work has begun related to all of, all of these ADU efforts, but um, can you confirm that? Or is some of this work begun?
No, that's correct. But um, similar to the Affordable Housing Program where we're gonna have access to uh an, a expert consultant and have, and pay for partial staff hours, we're hoping to participate in um a newly created ADU center that's going to be serving San Mateo County. And so we haven't got to it yet, we haven't, because we have to figure out budget and actually indicate if we can participate and get council buy-in. Um, but my understanding is that the timing of that center kicking off would be in the summertime. So again, here, here's another situation where we don't have the staffing and necessarily the experts. And so we're gonna be able to um, take advantage of economies of scale. Uh, many other uh local jurisdictions are gonna be participating.
Right, um. Okay, um, number eight six. Um, can you describe what, what the expectation here is that we're, we're actually going to do? It says convene discussion and consider a program, I'm just.
I just want to say you're really challenging me.
I'm sorry. Just a lot in here and I want to make sure we are all aware of it, um.
It's totally fair, yeah, it's, it's really digging back into time when we were drafting this thing with our consultants and and trying to articulate, you know, what we wanted to do.
Okay, I, I, I'm not meaning to put you on the spot, Adrian, if it's.
No, no, not at all.
You know, honestly, I'm just trying to, you know, a lot of these dates are a couple of months away, so I'm just trying to understand what we're supposed to be doing here.
Yeah, I think, I think the gist of this program is in the past, we haven't had lines of communication with underserved communities, um, you know, cost burden households, the types of of potential residents um that could really benefit from housing in our community. We just, we, we don't, we don't know where they are, we don't know how to be in contact with them. And so we're trying to change that. And so we're thinking, working with, you know, local nonprofits, experts who can actually connect us with these, these groups of, of populations. Um, so that's the idea there. It's just to work towards affirmatively furthering fair housing and providing access to the housing opportunities in the community.
Okay.
Adrian, I have a question on that, uh, which is, this, I could read it, it's dovetailing with part of the post-adoption plan that was designed to reach out to local um religious organizations who might have an awareness of underserved populations. I don't know if that is underlying. Do you, do you recall if that partially fed into the, that concept?
I don't remember about religious communities in, in particular, but that sounds like a great synergy.
Yeah.
And you could, those programs could come together.
Mm-hmm.
Um, my last question, um, and I am recused on this specific property, um, nine one, but I am curious, um, when there's a reference to a policy here about um developing housing that serves development, developmentally disabled persons, and it says adopt policy. Um, maybe that's more of a question for Catherine. Um, maybe that's more of a question for Catherine. What, what, what kind of policy would be created there? What's the expectation there?
Hey, sorry.
Because that's coming up too.
So as, as I recall, I'm just trying to think back to how that came together. Since we do have this affordable housing fund, and of course, we now have a policy that's been established, which is great. Um, because the concern before was we don't have a process. We don't know how to award the fund. There needs to be procedure. And so now council is taking care of that aspect. And so the idea, as I understand it, was to just generally communicate how, how, what the fund is for, connect, uh, affordable housing or, or, um, supportive housing and nonprofits that could benefit from this, these funds, access to these funds, and just establish the process, um, and especially with outreach. So actually like, so populations who could benefit from it actually know it exists and how to access the application process.
Okay, thank you. All right, guys. That's it, it for my questions. Um, are there any other questions from council before I move on to, um, public comment or, or?
The, the only question I have in timing, um, when does this get submitted with, with the due date, et cetera?
So the due date is ac- was actually April first, but HCD said, don't worry, I checked. I said, is it okay to submit late? And they said, that's fine. So we're good. Um, I wanted to make sure that we got before council. You, you don't have to, you can submit to HCD and then go to your council. But what I wanted to avoid was just in case we had to make any changes, not have to go back to HCD. So I was just trying to make for a stream, more streamlined process.
Makes sense.
So I'm thinking submission by next week. There's no reason to sit on it. So get it off our plates.
Oh, I had one question, which may not be, uh, relevant or how it doesn't, it isn't directly related, related to any of these numbered things. But occupancy doesn't seem to be on here, and that seems to have been one of the big complaints I'm hearing from residents that they haven't been allowed to occupy their ADUs, they, uh, that there's been a problem with. And I'd hate to see Willow Commons coming up, wanting to be occupied and being held up by a, a lot of, uh, uh, second uh, requests and fines and, uh, and extra inspections, which has been what, uh, has happened in the, uh, private sector, so to speak. Maybe that's not, with private residents and ADUs.
That one's kind of difficult to answer generically because each applicant has their own.
Set.
Situation and process. A lot of the times, the town requires outstanding documents before they can schedule a final inspection.
Mm-hmm.
Before they can move to occupancy. Um, so that's a little bit complicated. Um.
I just don't see it as sort of part of the plan. And when do we actually allow people to live here?
So the, yeah, I mean.
Uh, part of the time course is what I guess I'm seeing.
Well, is that a policy, Mary, or isn't that just project by project?
Yeah.
You want to, you want to see a streamlined path to getting to occupancy? I don't think that's a requirement for this submission though.
No, no, not at all. I, I'm, I'm just asking whether it makes sense to be considered, actually where the rubber hits the boat.
All right, any other questions before I move on to public comment? Um, any hands raised in the schoolhouse?
None.
All right, I'm moving to Zoom. The first hand raised is, is David Cardinal.
Wonderful. Thank you. Um, first of all, hey, appreciate your work to untie this Gordian knot and especially given our limited staff. Um, I'm all for submitting this and hopefully getting it approved, but want to make sure we're only kidding HCD and not ourselves. Um, as others have pointed out, reiterating some of what Sarah said and what Jim White has said and Tim Clark has said, that we don't really have a plan for affordable housing, uh, that will actually get built. Um, nine of the 17 units in the plan are Jim and Patty's. And he's already said he's not sure he can get them built. He's not getting much help. And, um, they're the only ones really, um, on the charts right now. The other ones are these fictional ADUs that we get to classify as affordable because of these grandfathered rules that are going to go away in two years. Um, and then Ladera Church, Tim Clark has already said he cannot build anything based on what he's heard so far. Certainly not MF20, maybe six small, uh, manufactured homes, which look beautiful. But he's not getting any help. And we, the town, don't seem to be engaged with either Jim and Patty or, uh, Tim, since we can't actually say what their issues are or who's in charge or how we're responding. Um, other than that, we've got Stanford, who if we rezoned or approved their EIR or whatever, we get another dozen affordable units, which would be great, but that's not going anywhere so far. Um, and I don't see, you know, we have a sunrise thing at Dorothy Ford Park, which nobody likes. And it's not going to start for two years. So I think if we benchmarked ourselves as to how many affordable housing units were created that people could rent and move into this year, the answer would be less than five. I think next year, the answer will also be less than five. And the following year might still be less than five unless we recount Jim and Patty's units. If we don't do something drastic, and if we don't want affordable housing, that's one thing. And if we just want to deek HCD into believing we do, that, that's fine. Uh, it's not my opinion. I think we need affordable housing. So I'd love to see at whatever points we can, we put some leverage into it and actually make it possible to put affordable housing in our town. Thank you.
Thank you, Dave. Um, next speaker is Rita Comas.
Hi, um, thank you for taking my comment. And so this is a lot of building that happens and, uh, it looks like we have some, uh, deadlines at different points that we need to then answer to. But our town still has no plans to, uh, fix the infrastructure to connect all of this housing to, which will be a huge cost based on our current finances. Uh, and then we don't have a plan, you know, even if you had the money, you still had to have to make time to put together a, a three, five, 30-year infrastructure plan. And, and so far, unless it's a secret, I haven't heard anything about it. And I, I am concerned with, um, people on the dais referring to the Stanford Wedge project as if it is a done deal. It is a, a still a DEIR, a draft EIR. Um, and it's been almost two years, I guess next month, since the, um, the residents and the different agencies had sent in their comments, um, at May 12th, 2022, I believe. Um, but, uh, we have not heard any updates, but it's interesting that it is, uh, talked about as if it's a done deal. And that, that makes me uncomfortable because there were so many outstanding items that need to be discussed on that. And as far as, uh, affordable housing, it's good to see that we're looking into different agencies to, uh, to work with different people. But, uh, how's the town? And I've talked to people about this before and they're, they were very much against this about section eight housing with the state, which would then allow us to receive, uh, more funds. And it would also restrict and lock things in a bit, um, to make sure that those houses become affordable housing. But, uh, section eight housing is, uh, uh, you know, a straight path to make sure that whatever is considered low income affordable, uh, will stay that way. Thank you. I, I, I really enjoyed this discussion, but I want to make sure that, uh, whatever it is that we send in is, is right and not just aspirational. Um, so that we can, we can move forward as a town and, and get our housing element, uh, approved and not just reports that look like, looks good and do real, real things. And I know everyone's working hard on that. Thank you.
Thank you, Rita. Um, next up, I believe, is Carolyn Vertonghen.
Thank you very much. A lot was discussed and of course, I'm not prepared to calculate everything in three minutes. But, uh, here are my highlights. Thanks to Rita for pointing this out, even, uh, David Cardinal. Um, and I'm not going to, um, repeat what they said. But I have a huge issue with the financial uncertainty. We have been contributing annually to the HIP housing and to 21 elements. So town council, you should ask how much we have contributed. Secondly, there is a division or divide in Portola Valley. And some people will not report this. Remember, a lot of people built ADUs after we reached our 2015 GINA. And I'm upset about that because those people knew they would not be counted and they build it. And now those people who waited, we cannot build it. So no, I'm, 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 I'm upset about this. HIP and 21 element is another government, uh, extension of providing services. We don't even know if we have the money. Remember, the state of California is in a deficit. San Mateo County is in a deficit and you guys continue to promote grants. We don't even know if we have the grants. Okay, so let me go back to the housing elements that we have, that Portola Valley has approved in 2015 apart. And I keep on repeating it. There is a requirement that the utilities committees or commission, um, companies have to provide to the town that you have adequate water. You have adequate water pressure. You have adequate electricity. You have adequate internet. And we failed to do that. So you owe something to the residents right now because everything that you are building now is on our scenic corridors, on the main roads, Alpine and Portola. Oh, they will get everything they want, but all the people above it will be affected by it. And you have not addressed it. And we have a huge problem because it is fire safety, public safety. Uh, nothing has been addressed and you make me very mad because you keep on ignoring it. And it's a huge issue. You have young consultants, wonderful programs, but it's not reality. And I'm asking town council to get into the reality mode. You have to protect your own residents first before this continues. And that includes evacuation routes, public safety, and you have not addressed it. You promised it and you have not addressed it. Thank you.
Thank you, Carolyn. Um, I don't see any other hands raised. Um, so I will bring it back, um, to, uh, the council for discussion. Oh, I do see one more. Jim White?
Uh, I just had to respond to a couple of things. One is our population has actually declined over the last 40 years. And since 2000, the last two decades, it's actually lower. Um, if you go look at the tables, um, there's actually essentially outside of Willow Commons, no net new housing. It's all, building permits are for rebuilds of existing housing stock and ADUs, which we, I think, will all generally agree is not new, um, housing here. So, uh, I think we just have to be careful in the red herring on this is, you know, dramatically changing things. I don't think it is. Um, I think the ADU policy, if that's true, is really, um, I think a, a major challenge for the town, given almost half the units that are in our budget. And especially almost all of the very low income and, and low income are, are, are categorized through that. And we get a, a massive benefit economically as a town because projects that truly are affordable need financial support from local towns and counties and the state. But the town actually has to contribute generally 10 to 20%. And that's, you can do the math. It's, it's a substantial economic impact to make those happen, which I've articulated several times why I am frustrated with the town, uh, in specific with Willow Commons and the lack of town participation. Um, I think you need to give the town staff the ability to say, no, they can't do all of this. You can't even outsource it. Um, they're trying to say yes, but I think we're checking boxes and not doing anything well. Um, I would highly encourage allowing the management team to prioritize what they do and do it well and be clear on things that they're not going to do. So reporting to HCD on our performance report, we're going to do everything and everything's being done right. Maybe Dave, David Cardinal's right. We're just trying to fool HCD and we're all, you know, complicit in that, that, that kind of, um, report. Um, but I think in the way we run, I, I would highly encourage you to be realistic about what we can do with very limited staff and what our priorities are. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Um, no more hands raised. I'm going to close, um, public comment and bring it back for discussion. Who would like to start?
Um, I'm willing to start. Um, so I think I really just have two comments. Um, one of them, sort of Sarah got to indirectly through a bunch of her questions, but I, I was going to ask that I'd, I'd like to see quarterly updates rather than an annual update because there's lots of deadlines all through this thing. And it's hard for me to see how we're going to meet them. And I would like to know if we're going to meet them or if we're not meeting them, what we're doing to try to meet them rather than find out like a year later, oh, by the way, we blew through five or six deadlines. Because then it, you know, it's pretty hard to deal with that. Um, so that would, that would be my, my first request. Um, and then my other request is, and I think Dave Carden was trying to touch on it as well, is clearly with Willow Commons and Ladera. I mean, if we're going to prioritize planning effort, try to get those projects moving. Um, I really think we need to think about, you know, how do we help accelerate those guys? And that's not necessarily funding them, but maybe just prioritizing them when they show up at the planning department to make sure that they get what they need to start making decisions. Because certainly the, the feedback I get indirectly on the Ladera stuff is it, it feels like they're pretty confused about what they can do and what we're asking them to do. And it, if nothing else, it feels like they, they need somebody to sit out, sit down with them and help them kind of work through what's really being requested and what they can really do. And, and make sure that everybody's clear. Because right now, I, I feel like that the stuff I've heard is they don't have a clear idea of what's being asked of them or what they can do.
May I respond?
I believe you can, please.
Um, so for Ladera Church, there was certainly a robust conversation with them when we identified them as a arena site. And we worked with our, um, consultant Lisa Wise, who is, who's our consultant on our zoning amendments to site plan and look at unit capacity. And at the time, Ladera Church, um, you know, they said 10 units sounded about right. And so that's what you see in our housing moment. So that's the information that we had from them. Right now, we are in the middle of establishing, uh, objective design standards, objective development standards. Um, I appreciate that Tim Clark, the representative, has come to most of our meetings and, and been involved. It's great to see him out. Um, he has said that they have talked to Habitat for Humanity. They are not partners. We said to him, he, he has at points, um, raised concerns about potentially the design standards being overly complex, that perhaps, uh, a partner could not build to those specs. But he hasn't been able to articulate what those are because he, they aren't partners yet with Habitat. So there's no real firm information for staff to respond to and tailor to, because we're not trying to, we want, we want the site to be developed. Like absolutely, we have the units committed to in our housing element. It's super important. So certainly if they have any feedback for us to say, listen, we ran by some of these draft standards by our potential partner. This is a no-go, that is a no-go. Well, we want to hear that. But so far, we haven't heard anything that we can actually respond to and as I say, tailor to. So it's just sort of, from my perspective, I'm hearing kind of just general statements. statements floating around there and we can't really react to it in a productive way.
Sure. And I think what, I think my comments are really addressed to the future planning director more than this particular report, which is, I think we need to reach out to them. I think we should be reaching out to them on a regular basis and pulling from them rather than, oh, well, when you submit something, then we'll give you feedback. I mean, I appreciate that that's the general way we do stuff, but these two projects, I think, deserve our outreach as well because they're pretty critical to what we're doing. So again, not so much this report per se, but more, just like I was suggesting, we have quarterly reports on how we're doing, that we'd be a little bit more proactive. I think that's actually what I'm looking for.
Yeah, I think once we have our, again, we're open minded to listen to any feedback for the actual zoning code amendments right now, but once we get that into play and we can actually start facilitating our plan and hopefully get some development activity, your point is well taken that we need to have an open, constant dialogue because these sites are critical to the town achieving its RENA. So I completely agree.
Great, thank you.
Any other discussion?
Yeah, I mean, I'll just say, I think as far as this report, I'm fine with it being sent as is to HCD, just knowing that it really kind of is, is an update on what's due for us. As far as the deadlines, I agree, we have to keep monitoring them. I don't know if I want to turn into a quarter. I don't want to put more work on staff other than to know that we need to monitor this and just keep tabs on these. There are a lot of deadlines coming up. I would like to meet the deadlines rather than spend a lot of time reporting on the deadlines. So I'm fine with this report going forward as it is and, you know, I I'm happy to discuss other concerns people have about the projects within it, but this is, you know, some of those concerns are with the housing element itself, not with the report we're sending on the update.
I just, call me an optimist, but I think this is a good, a good document. You've done a great job in a very difficult situation. And I also agree with Craig that when, when we get a more robust staff, I don't think we should be as reactive as we've been. I think you don't have to wait until somebody comes around and asks to talk to you. You could actually, for example, I'll say Westridge, you know, Westridge, that lot is part of Westridge. Somebody needs to reach out to Westridge relatively quickly and make sure this is going to go through. Don't wait until Westridge responds. Wait, you know, they're reasonable people. They're capable of making a decision that makes sense to them. But they can't be surprised they're back backrooted. That's my only thought. I mean, it seems we have gotten far with Ladera. My other thought, of course, is Christchurch, which I follow very closely and have not seen hide nor hair of the town since, for the last five years. So I, I would say that again, the illusion that we're moving along fast with our partners is, it needs to become more robust and it will as soon as we get more proactive and more comfortable with what's going on with the plan.
Yeah, I agree. I think we really need to get the zoning amendments out of the way. And then we can actually, it's a huge step for facilitating the housing element. It's like, it's going to unlock our sites once we get our re-zones completed. But that's a huge lift right now. It's taking a ton of time. And once that's over with, yeah, we have to get into program implementation.
And then as far as the religious institution is concerned, it is really true that they're completely hand drawn right now. Because of the way they're, they're projected on our general plan. They can't, they can't move forward without clarifying their, how their zoning is used.
Um, it depends on which institutions you mean. Some of the institutes, like Christchurch, for example, is an affiliated housing partner. We talk with them extensively about what they'd be willing to do to build affordable housing on their site under the affiliated housing program. So we just aren't in a position to kick off those programs yet. So we're just not at that step. But it's in the plan for sure. Sarah highlighted one of the program numbers where we want to have monthly office hours and make sure those, those institutions have a good access to staff.
And they may not have access. They may have to be pursued.
You make a good point.
I mean, having been on there and not seen any interaction, I doubt the conversations.
Yeah, I mean, and certain institutions have good intentions and like the idea of providing affordable housing on their site, but they, they don't have any experience. And so I agree, our staff will act as a resource to them.
Yeah, I mean, they should show up at best meetings and all that kind of stuff.
Right.
Thank you.
So thank you, Adrian, for pulling all this together with the team. I assume there's always a team behind you. And for, I'm comfortable with the submission, pretty much as I did myself. But I do want to make a couple of comments. One is it's hard to have a discussion of any one aspect of the housing element at the moment because everything comes in. All of the challenges and all of the submissions and all of the comments we're responding to. So as we move forward, if you feel inundated, we understand. It's going to happen. We're inundated too. But I think this has been a really good discussion because people are starting to coalesce around what our challenges are. We might disagree a little bit around the edges, but there are significant challenges here. I do think getting organized, once we're beyond the zoning, to have regular quarterly updates of where we are, and this will dovetail to the post-adoption plan discussion, would be advisable for everybody to give opportunities for input. Again, once staff and the new planning director are here, I don't want to get ahead of it and put another unrealistic item on the table. Just, yeah, but getting toward there would be good. Certainly looking at submitting for any reimbursement we can possibly get at the right time is, is going to help us. So that was something I had forgotten about. So thank you. I think one of the comments or a couple of them went to our process being maybe too aspirational, maybe I disagree with the idea that we're trying to pull the wool over HCD's eyes. I mean, we, we have to comply, period. There's no getting around it. We've got to create a plan for that. But I don't disagree that we have challenges on what's realistic because we've never done this before. And we, I do think the comments about prioritizing, being realistic about what we can do and when we can do it as a team, both with the council and the staff, trying to figure out what's the most important thing to get us to the objective would be a good exercise as we go through these quarterly reports. I think it would be good for all of us to recognize that. And then the last comment is there are going to be aspects where some of these programs can be matched up with some of the post-adoption efforts and maybe there can be synergies there that can not duplicate efforts, but like coordinate efforts more. So I just preview that I would be looking for those opportunities as this all rolls out. But thank you very much for all the effort.
Is it my turn? I think so. Adrian, I know you have been a one woman show. You know, we know you've been working really hard, so please don't misunderstand my questions. I'm just trying to clarify and also, you know, remove the cobwebs that I also have from having gone through the housing element process, you know, starting three years ago. So thank you very, very much. I would say, you know, I am definitely pretty concerned about this report, you know? I think the timelines are really aggressive and the volume of work is enormous. And so when I think about, you know, I'm thrilled. Thank you, Sharif. I'm so glad that we have the new hire coming in. But even with that, I'm very skeptical about our ability to get through all this work. And I don't know, you know, if there are thoughts, this, this is a, this is a spike of work that is, you know, not the normal course of doing business. And so I just worry about our planning and building department in terms of our resources in general to have the throughput of the regular day-to-day business, which my understanding is there's a backlog. And then on top of it, you know, getting through all of these new items. And so I just want to flag that as a serious resource constraint, even when we get, you know, these two new people in. And so I just want to flag that, I guess I would say. Cause I do think we're going to miss these deadlines and I do think we're going to have complaints. I mean, we saw a complaint come through in the public comment tonight. You know, I have, I have an email from Christ or from Ladera, and they're also not happy with the process. So I don't know if they'll make a public complaint, but I know that they're unhappy. You know, specifically even where the zoning is going, zoning that doesn't work for them. And so I just feel this kind of mounting number of items that need to be addressed. And I do, you know, my, my sense is based on what I've heard is that we're not going to be hearing from HCD on this list other than annually, but I haven't been told that definitively by anyone. So it seems like we don't know. And then we could end up in this recurring loop of, you know, having our certification rescinded. And I, you know, after what happened, you know, last week, I think that's a real, you know, a serious issue for, for our process and the community. I think the, the only other comment I wanted to make is I know we often, you know, we want to look to 21 elements and pooled resources for, you know, some of these, these items, but as what happens often in our community is, you know, we have a more of a boutique approach to doing things. And so I'll, I'll be curious to see if taking like an off-the-shelf 21 elements affordable housing management program that might work in a large community would work in Portola Valley. Like I think there's, there's, there's going to be work there to customize it for our needs. Another example, I had another example of why. Or for instance, using, you know, ADU plans that might work, you know, throughout the peninsula, but given the topography of our town, I don't think that's realistic either. So again, that's just another challenge for the amount of work that needs to be done. Cause I don't think we'll be able to take those off-the-shelf things from 21 elements and just plug them in. And a lot of these, you know, a couple of these deadlines are in June. So I'm not comfortable with the report because I think the deadlines are unrealistic. But I think I'll just leave it at that. I know we're all trying to do our best. We've been in a really difficult situation, but I just don't think, you know, the timelines in there are unrealistic. So I don't have any much to add beyond that. And I don't know if that closes the agenda item. I know this was just, we're not taking a vote or anything like that, right, on this agenda item, Sharif?
I mean, it does say to approve.
There is a recommendation to receive the report. I don't know, Adrian, if you have thoughts about that. I've seen other councils that do make a motion to receive the report. Do you have a preference? I think that's appropriate. Okay, great. Then I'd recommend a motion to receive the report.
I move to receive the report.
Second. Roll call vote?
Councilmember Elbs?
Aye.
Councilmember Hupdi?
Aye.
Councilmember Taylor?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Haskell?
Aye.
Mayor Warnerco?
Aye.
Motion carries.
So before we move on, Catherine, can I ask you, when we put things like approve and discuss and approve, that doesn't sound like received. So help, help me understand kind of what approve means when we put it in the agenda.
Approve would mean the council would be expected to take a formal action on it. In this case, HCD is, the state housing law doesn't actually require council approval. It, interesting, but it requires that the governing body consider the report at a public meeting where members of the public are invited to comment. That's it. And you did that. So, but, but there is no legal requirement or no state law requirement to approve it.
So I'm just wondering in future agendas, is there a different word rather than saying that we're going to approve the annual report?
I don't believe the agenda says that.
It does.
It says approve, actually.
Oh, it does. Okay. I'm looking at the staff report, which says staff recommends receiving the report. I think we'll be more careful going forward to sync up the staff recommendation and the staff report with the agenda.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Perhaps review.
All right.
Since I'm in this sort of process with the attorney, can I ask one more question?
Yep.
On the consent agenda, is there any way that we can have discussion without pulling these? Cause it seems like a lot of time, we're not really voting to get up or down. It's really like, I have a question. So I don't need the answer right now, but I'm wondering if we can find a process that cycles through this where we just say, are there any questions on the consent agenda without having to pull them to ask the question? And then we can pull them if we want to actually have a discussion and a vote. So anyway, I don't necessarily need an answer now, but it just seems cumbersome what we're doing. Thank you.
Mayor Warnerco, I could personally use a break before we move on.
Okay. Sure. Do you want to, it's 8:47, five minute break? Reconvene at 8:52? All right, calling the meeting back to order. And moving on to the next agenda item, Judith and Craig.
Do you want me to start in on what we, what we put in the packet?
Okay, so hopefully a lot of our submission, our subcommittee report looks familiar to a lot of people, but everyone's overwhelmed with the amount of information regarding the housing element. So I wouldn't be surprised if you've forgotten. So a year ago-ish, we approved what we call the post-adoption plan that is attached to this current subcommittee report as attachment one. It's a relatively high level set of items that we adopted from the planning commission colleagues memo and adjusted to what we thought could facilitate progress with the housing element in a way that reflects Portola Valley's needs and situation. At that point, Craig and I were appointed as a subcommittee to drill down into more detail. We undertook that and came up with the next level of activities. So we kept the same categories. And we then started fleshing out, well, what, what would a certain effort take? Would it take a subcommittee? Would it take an ad hoc committee? Would it take a working group? And roughly, not with precision, we started mapping out timelines for when certain activities could get done. Obviously we prioritize the sunrise timeframe activities that are directed to looking at sites other than Dory People Field that could be supportive of affordable housing. But there are a lot of other activities in here that I think matched up in part with what we were just discussing as part of the programs in our annual report, such as doing outreach to look at infrastructure support being available, just seeing if we're all set or if there are issues there. Reaching out to local communities, organizations that might have a sense of what our general affordable housing needs are and how to connect with those people and make sure we're understanding the town's needs. So that was the detailed post-adoption plan. It's not that detailed, but it was more detailed. So that's included in attachment two. But in September, when we looked at it, that we didn't have budget items, like no idea of the directional trajectory for the budget for these activities. So at that time, we could have either postponed the whole So at that time, we could have either postponed the whole adoption of the whole plan or to get certain things off the ground and running, identified items that did not require a budget line item to be attached. So we adopted two, three, four, five of the topics or four and a half. And, and postponed a discussion of topic one, topic three point two, topic four, five and seven, until we could frame out some of the budget items. We were all very busy and occupied toward the end of the year and did not manage to bring that forward in the originally intended timeframe and which we had idealistically called November. So Craig and I have been working hard since then to try and act to put together with staff's input directional guidance on a potential budget. So if you look at attachment three, this is a different format of the detailed post-adoption plan activities. And it, it has several different aspects. So first of all, the items previously approved are in green. So we're looking this evening at and this is a summer summary of what the activities would be, but anything in black is something that we haven't yet approved. We also have directional guidance on potential budgets for the line items. And it's not going to be very precise. The way we asked staff to put this together was a not to exceed budget. So what could we, you know, either certainly or possibly get done within a certain timeframe? With the understanding that we would, in this time of, you know, financial stress on the town. We want to get started, but we also don't want to be unrealistic. So we, we put together a budget that was spread out over at least three years, if not longer. The third column does reach out twenty twenty-six and beyond and attached different dollar amounts to it. So the way to think about this is the timelines are going to move. As some of our timelines in the plan, we, or the summary we just discussed and received the report for will move. I would think considering quarterly updates or, or periodic updates to those timelines to see where we are and check in would be good. But what we're looking for tonight is a discussion and consideration of adoption of this as a framework for proceeding to approve the remaining items in black here. So that's the background. Craig, what would you add?
Thank you, Judith. Yeah, I think that's a, a good summary. The only thing I just wanted to stress was, I know it seems like it was forever. In the past, when we were first looking to pass the housing element. But I feel like this represents a commitment that we made to the community. That that was part of what we agreed when we were passing the housing element. So I do think it's important tonight that we discuss this and potentially approve these items so that they can move forward. And as Judith said, I, I'm very flexible on the dates. I mean, I, we tried to do our best to come up with some sort of rough timeline of where they foot in, fit in, but we, we got a lot of, you know, we've got staff issues and we've got budget issues and zoning. And so the, the fact that some of these are going to move around, I think that's okay. These are meant to be more sort of directional. But I think it is important that we affirm the commitment tonight and that we basically start the process to move this forward. Thank you.
Back to you, Sarah.
Thank you very much, guys. Questions from Mary or Jeff? I have some, but.
Yeah, I'll start. Just as a, just kind of logistics, if we approve this plan, then the expenses here get approved as part of each annual budget over these three years or longer. I mean, we, we basically come back and we revisit the, the year. If we wanted to push something back or, you know, for budgetary reasons, we'd do that separately.
Yeah, I, I would say this is not, this was, we worked with John to get some best estimates so that we could sort of scope this. I'm assuming this will still go through a budgeting product. Like this tonight is not a commitment to this budget. But this is roughly the number. And, and as it says, you know, there's two thirty-three here for a total, but we've already committed a hundred and thirty of that already. So we're down to about a hundred K in consulting and, and some of that will depend on how it plays out. And, and absolutely it's spread out over a number of years.
Right. Well, actually, I mean, the biggest commitment on here, biggest outstanding commitment is, is obviously the CEQA local thresholds. Is that something, I mean, what, how, I'm, I'm trying to remember exactly what the, you know,
Yeah.
the concerns and the timing of that. How, how concerned were you about the timing of this, of establishing the local threshold?
So we want to get them started in terms of a framework. The, the general concept, and I'm going to talk about it, how I think about it, not how a planner would precisely describe it. But the state laws around CEQA and the, the thresholds that are used to determine in general CEQA related activities that need to be undertaken or remediations that need to be undertaken are set at a level this macro and we're a micro town and essentially with particular two roads ingress and egress. So putting an additional layer on, not necessarily like numerical values, but if a new project of a certain size came in, what additional steps would analysis should be undertaken in order to make sure that it's, it's going to be something that, that can work or, or doesn't need to be mitigated. That, that's a general gist of it. And it did derive from the planning commission colleagues.
Right. I remember that. I remember some of the discussion. I'm just trying. So I mean, the, the outcome of this could very likely be that we establish thresholds that impose additional burdens on projects in town, most of which would be borne by the developer.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. I mean, you know, like if, if we needed to do, like, you know, what's the impact on evacuation if we build?
This could push a project from an MND to a, to a
An EIR.
EIR.
Yeah.
Or, or complicate the, or add, add, add analysis to an EIR. More likely would, would make an EIR more detailed and require some more analysis of the EIR.
I, I don't even, that needs to be determined, right? The idea is more having a framework for when you need an additional process in place, not necessarily to say,
Right.
you know, a project of this size should do the following things. That's, that would be too prescriptive and too, too much.
I'm just, I mean, the overall goal of this was to build in some additional protections for the town and the most likely sort of anticipated consequences would mostly fall on sort of a developer or private party, not on the town. I'm just, I'm thinking ahead to unintended, unintended consequences or unanticipated consequences. Reassure, reassure myself and not committing myself moving to.
I mean, I think the expectation is like in an EIR that there would be, there are some areas that we would expect more detail than a sort of standard state EIR mark required.
No, that's, that's, that was my main question.
My, my question maybe isn't totally formulated yet, but it seems to me that these expenses would happen with the Dorothy Ford Park anyway. I mean, I, I don't see that these are extra expenses.
A lot of them would.
Yeah.
I think some of these activities would be useful for an, a range of projects. Some are more focused under the people.
Right. And then of course, the other elephant in the room is the ten percent for, that people are talking about that you have to throw in for the developers to be interested in these affordable housing projects.
I don't think we're, like in that framework that we have, that's not really covered, right?
I realize that. I realize that. It's just something to
Keep our eye on, yeah.
Yeah. I mean, how realistic is this going to be? But it's, I, I think it's great, great work. But that's a comment, not a question.
Sarah, I think it's back to you.
So I'm still, thank you. I'm still a little confused on what we're deciding tonight. Are we, what I thought I heard Judith in your opening is that putting forth this document as a framework. But then I also heard, I mean, are we approving the budget? I, I'm confused because is it the framework? Is it, I heard it's not the timeline? And I'm unclear on the budget. So I'm not, we're being asked to approve.
Yeah, it would be. So I would want to propose that we approve essentially appendix three with the timing and the budget for the items in black. Now, the reason I said it's a framework is because I can guarantee you the timing is going to be needing further scrutiny. We don't even know when the zoning will be approved and that is a primary focus of the near future for us all. So we need to get through that and then see where we are. But, but I want to have this in there with an idea to come back quarterly and give updates on where we are and, and progress and, and suggest adjustments to the timing. Cause I think that's going to be the the aspect that gets changed the most. And then for the budget, yeah, we're, we're looking at the incremental approval for it. If anyone has a more procedural, accurate procedural way of looking at it, feel free to weigh in and Craig.
Yeah. I mean, I do think the framework's the right way to describe it. And the budget to me, it's, I mean, there's two ways. So this is a not to exceed. So this is giving staff direction. Like these are things that need to get done. You need to plan to do these things. And you need to plan to do them within this budget. Now they may come back and say, oh, well, now that we understand what this is, that wasn't $10,000. We can do this for $2,000. So the actual thing that we put in a budget might be lower when they analyze this, but this, I think what we're proposing that get approved tonight is a not to exceed. I mean, we went through this pretty carefully with John to say, okay, let's cap these things so they don't turn into these sort of runaway projects. Because that wasn't the goal when we sort of set this stuff up. So that's the, the, the important thing I think about the, the not to exceed is that they are limited in what the scope is going to be by the budget amount.
So just to, as follow-up, I mean, when we went through the process before, we approved all of these items. So that is not in question. So, and we've also yeah, we, and we approved all the items including the items that are in green that were no budget, but we, we, in, in, in we approved in concept T1 through T8. So in terms of like the commitment to the community. I think, you know, I certainly feel like I made that. You guys brought, you know, brought this through and we've made that commitment. So it seems like I'm trying to figure out is that's, that part's not in question. So really what's being put forward is this framework that includes dates and budgets. Cause the commitment is already there. Cause we've already agreed to it. We already passed it.
I, I think that's fine, except, you know, it's now April and the last time we talked about it was in November. So I, I think we're just trying to make sure that we're committed and that we're actually going to work on this. So, so in that sense, the framework part of this to me is there is, there are timelines here. And if they come back and say, you know, it's not realistic, it's going to be a couple of months later. I think that's fine. If they come back and say it's going to be three years later, I would say that's not okay. So that's where I meant that these are directional, that I expect them to be roughly, roughly right. But I know that there's a lot going on so that they could shift some, but this can't get done in year seven of the, the housing cycle, for instance.
Right. Okay. And then I, I'm sure you guys, you got, and this isn't a criticism. It's, this is hard work and there's been a lot of different formats. And I'm sure one of the reasons you put the adoption date with months is because things kept sliding and it was, you know, you're recalculating over and over again. So I appreciate why you probably did that. But we do now have an adoption date. And so as I try to follow this, I'm constantly trying to like figure out what month these things are going to come through, especially things that are short, like the month of April or the month of July. Are you guys open to, in the framework, actually articulating the month now that we do have this adoption date?
Yeah. And I mean, if, if, if tonight we're comfortable with it, I can easily go through my spreadsheet and regenerate this with months and year rather than dates from, months from adoption. Sure.
It's just because that's not a moving, adoption already happened. And I'm assuming this isn't going to slide based on certification or not certification.
Well, that's part of the discussion for tonight.
Yeah.
I mean, that's why I left it open when, when we had this is, I wanted to have this discussion. If we're good with this, I'm, I'm willing to lock them down to, you know, a, a month and a year.
And then the other thing is I really liked the table that you guys put together at the September twenty-seventh meeting. And I noticed you didn't include that in the packet. Two aspects that were helpful is the timeframes that we just talked about as well as body involved. And so kind of going back to, if we're approving the framework, I would appreciate tracking the, you know, the body involved as well as the timeline.
Yes. The, that chart was derived from the more detailed presentation here.
Right.
So it is in here. It, it, we just didn't want to overwhelm people with two different formats in this presentation, but we can certainly go back and use that. But the same information is here. We haven't changed that.
Right, right. It's just.
And, and I can add that one piece. I, I was just trying, what I found was the old table was not as complete as the detailed, but too big to actually feel like a summary. So I was trying to capture something, you know, that was a summary, but adding the body involved. I mean, there, that's, that's an easy thing to do.
And then I know that you guys reviewed the budget numbers with John Biggs. Did it, did you have any, you know, knowing that we had the possibility of a new planning director starting? Did you give any consideration to waiting so that person could review the numbers? Or are you, is it just because it's do not exceed your, I'm assuming I might be answering the question that I'm asking.
Yeah, that, that's exactly right. I mean, first of all, we, we pressure tested a lot of the numbers and brought them down because the key point for at least me was let's get started and make sure we spend some money to know where we are, like do not exceed can be viewed like that. And the, but these are also realistic after talking with John about if it works the way we want it to, or we've made the right assumption, this should be a realistic approach. So I, I, since the increment is a hundred thousand and it's spread over three plus years, I personally didn't think it was worth waiting. And because we're going to be open to adjustments as we learn more about what the implementation of this looks like, I, I, I had every faith that we'd be able to work well with the planning director on any concerns that they, they had going forward. But we got to get started, is my view.
And so, thank you. And so given the, how do you guys think about? I'm, I'm hearing that there's flexibility on the timeline and we know there's a lot of, you know, most of these have staff work associated with it. And we just reviewed all the work coming down the pipe with the annual report. How do you guys think about prioritizing the items on the annual report relative to the work that has to be done here?
Well, my sense is a bunch of things here kind of support the housing element pretty directly and programs. So I guess I see them as being sort of interleaved. Like I don't see that this always takes second priority. I think these are things we've made a commitment and we need to, to move them along. But I do realize that there's some stuff that we just absolutely have to get done with HCD. But things like the sunrise, I mean, if we don't But things like the sunrise, I mean, if we don't get going on it, we will just run out of time, so you know, there's, there's some things in here that have pretty hard deadlines on them that we need to deal with, and they, they need high priority. And then there's other stuff that, yeah, I mean, if it moved out, and, and we even pushed some of that out, and you can see with some of the budget stuff that we pushed some of that out, where it's not as critical if it starts right away. I mean, some of the things like making sure we think about the next housing cycle. If we move that out a little bit, I mean, that's fine, but I don't want to get to year eight like we did this last time, and then start thinking about all the problems that we have to deal with. Like, that was so painful the last time, that part of this was trying to prevent that from happening a second time.
Yeah, and for what it's worth, as I was hearing the annual summary today, I kept saying, oh, that would sync up, that would sync up, or that's a complimentary thing, we, we might want to synergize both efforts, and it's not going to be everything, and I, I take the general concern that the staff can't do five things at once. And we have to work that out, but we don't, we have to, I think, see what can overlap between the two. And maybe this collapses down in part, but right now, we couldn't do that. I, I, I personally would expedite getting started and trying to bring things together so there's synergy, not duplication as a priority, as we move forward.
Okay, um, one more question, I'm trying to find it here, sorry. Oh, this is on T1, I just want, was a little just confused, on T1.1, in terms of the timing, just the way this is formatting here, obviously, the subcommittee was formed. The 12 months and 15 months, what do those correlate to? Like, I through four, one through four there, how do those correlate to the timelines? And the yes, yes, maybe?
Well, yeah, so, well, so the yes, yes, maybe is staff needs.
Right.
So what I was trying, trying to do when we were talking with John is to say, you know, here are places you clearly are, there's going to be some staff involvement. But the, the timing, like, the 12 months has to do with developing timeline for the work product for the new ad hoc committee. So, you know, that needs to be done sort of in this next year, right? If we're going to get the ad hoc committee up and running and have them deliver something to the council.
So the 15 would go with the viable housing alternative list? Is that it, Craig?
The initial list, yeah, exactly, yeah.
So the 15 goes with initial list, and the 12 goes with one through four?
Yeah.
Okay. And then on the repository, is there, that, that timeline is basically right now, three months after adoption. And I know this was one, you know, when, this was one that I thought we, we had said could get started, it wasn't, there weren't dependencies, so are there, is, is there, are there any updates on?
No, I think, I, I think it could get started, other than, you know, we, everybody's been busy, so we haven't gotten started on it. You had recommended we had a couple volunteers who might be willing to volunteer, so I think it's just a matter of circling back around and see if we can engage them.
Okay, that's it for my questions, thank you. Any other questions before I go to public comment? I don't, yep, I don't, I guess there's nothing in the schoolhouse, and I don't see any hands raised on Zoom. Rita, Rita Comas.
I'm just glad that we're really talking about this, making a plan, and I saw there was a little bit of infrastructure in this plan. And so it's, you know, so often we talk about things and then don't talk about them again forever. So I was, I was happy to see this on the agenda, I didn't know where it was going to go, but I, I'm really glad for this discussion. And I hope we put some things in place with the new employees to, to make them happen. Thank you. I look forward to, especially the infrastructure, because that's what we desperately need is a plan.
All right, I don't see any other hands raised on Zoom, so I'll bring it back for discussion.
Well, I can start. My, my reaction is just, thank you so much for this work. I, and for the, the way you articulated it, I think it was really good. I, I also think that it's gonna work. That's the other part that I think is going to make staff a lot happier, because we finally are, are looking at a plan that, at enough alternatives that we actually are going to be able to come up with something that they're going to be proud of. So there's nothing more gratifying than working for an organization that actually is successfully making a product that, that works. So I just want to thank you very much. I think the, the, the town, not that I can speak for everybody, but I certainly think that the town feels the optimism of this, and the clear thinking, and, and the hope for the future.
Yeah, thank you for fleshing this out. This is, it's helpful to have these numbers in front of us and, and a timeline for all of these things. And, yeah, there's a lot of work to be done here, and it's additional expense, but I agree that, that we, you know, we did commit to, to doing a lot of these things as follow-up to the housing element, and many of them have to be done one way or another, so it's good to see it all spelled out. Thank you, I'm, I'm actually pretty comfortable with it.
And I agree about the commitment, I'm fully committed to what we voted on, as I have been for the past year. I think for me, the priorities on this list, definitely I agree, are the sunrise, T1, and T8 in order to do that, and so I'm glad to hear that that work is going to start, because I don't think that needs staff. And I think my understanding is work on T3 has already begun, I know we have it on the roll forward. So, and that doesn't, that's more on Catherine's side of the house versus planning. But other than those three, I would say, you know, I'm committed to getting it done, but I definitely wouldn't prioritize it over zoning or the work we just reviewed in terms of the annual report. The difference with the work on the annual report is if we don't get to that stuff, we're going to keep getting decertified. That doesn't say I'm not wanting to do this other work, but I wouldn't prioritize the timeline and staffing, other than those items that, that I just mentioned. And so that's kind of my thought. Because of our resource constraints, because we don't have a planning and building director that has started. And yeah, we were just decertified, so I just don't think it's the time to be adding new work in the timeline right now with the work we have ahead of us, other than the ones that I just flagged, and I think all the other ones, by the way, are to start later. So I don't know why it's, it's so critical to pass budget on it right now, if we wouldn't even be starting on it for over 12 months. Especially given that we're just about to go through, you know, a pretty extensive review of our budgetings, you know, through the study sessions and the, and the budget challenges that we're facing. So that's my feeling on this. I appreciate all the work, and I'm committed to getting it done, it's just wouldn't, other than those items that I flagged, wouldn't, wouldn't be my priority.
So when do you think we're going to work on the safety element? For instance?
Well, how, what, what date do you have it on in here? You have it starting?
No, I guess I was trying to ask the question a little bit differently, which is, you're making it sound like we have no time to do anything but deal with the annual report and maybe Ford Field, and we clearly have to deal with the safety element. I mean, I think there are a bunch of things in here, so you know, we have supplemental safety, which is kind of nine to 12 months, so that's, you know, within this kind of timeframe. So I, I hear what you're saying, but, but I, when I look at this stuff, you know, some of it's like, you know, create a subcommittee of the town council to, to start kicking this off. I mean, we can do that, that doesn't take staff resources. And then a lot of it is a year later, and again, part of the reason I left this as dates from adoption, I mean, if we want to say that these things start as of March rather than as of January, I mean, that doesn't particularly bother me, but I, I do feel like the things that are in here that are kind of roughly a year out feel like things that need to get started kind of roughly this year.
Yeah, and, and again, I'm not, I'm not saying I'm not committed to it, and I, obviously, we've been talking about the reasons why we can't get to the safety element. One, in, in addition to staffing, it's also the maps, and so I guess I would be more comfortable in six months, which is before this timeline, to then flag those things, like, once our planning director, you know, once we see where we are. And that's, that's just how I feel, and I guess the, the bottom line is, I'm the outlier in the group, and I'm just, I'm perfectly comfortable agreeing to disagree. I appreciate the work you guys have done, it's just this wouldn't be my priority, and so in terms of Pat, you know, right now versus six months from now, because most of these timelines don't start until then anyhow. So that was just my thought.
Yeah. I've been working on this for a year and a bit. I feel very strongly, if we don't set some goals, they don't happen. We had a goal of November for getting to this, and for understandable reasons, we're here in April. So we are going to have to be pragmatic, from my point of view, we are going to have to be thoughtful of priorities, but to not even bother to set the priority to me is the wrong outcome. So I, I take your concern seriously and understand. We have to plan for having a fulsome staff. We also have to plan for seeing how things actually work in practice here. I, I think underlying all of this, and we're being asked to do a lot quickly, and I understand that that's not a good feeling. But the state has imposed requirements on us, and these were, in my mind, what we articulated to the public as a commitment in order to facilitate people looking at the housing element in a certain way, and, and saying, yeah, that these can be obtained or achieved, these aspirations, but we are going to make sure that they, they work right. As we go, I think we should be flexible in the application of it, but I think the wrong outcome is not to set goals, especially because we, we really did try and spread them out over time. That was our intent, so appreciated. I know, I, I understand the concerns, but I am personally more concerned about kicking the can.
Yeah, and I'm, to clarify, just so it's not misunderstood, and we can move on, because I am very happy to agree to disagree, I'm not kicking the can, I'm, I'm just saying, I don't feel the urgency to approve budget on some of these things that don't, I'm committed to getting them done. But that don't start for six plus months out, given, again, we're about to go into these, these budget sessions, we have a new planning and building director starting in a couple of weeks, and we have a lot on our plate with zoning and the things that are very, very short term on the annual report. So we can move on, and if somebody wants to make a motion, I just want to be clear, I am committed to it, it's just for, from a budgeting standpoint, wouldn't be the time that I would prioritize it.
Understood. So it's appropriate?
Gotta make a motion.
I will move through the, the post-adoption plan activities as presented in attachment three.
And I'll second it.
Can it, can I ask that, that, that it includes the updates to the format that we discussed?
Yes.
Is it friendly?
I second that one, too. To be clear, the changing the number of months to the actual month is one of them.
And the bodies involved.
And the bodies involved, okay.
Yep, I, I, I accept that change.
I second that amended change.
All right, roll call.
Councilmember Elfs?
Aye.
Councilmember, uh, Dee?
Aye.
Councilmember Taylor?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Haskell?
Aye.
Mayor Warner cough?
Aye.
Motion passes.
All right. Sorry, I lost my place in the agenda here. I believe we are moving on to subcommittee reports and liaison reports.
I, I need to add one. I, I was out of town and did not attend the emergency preparedness committee meeting last Thursday. I want to give a quick update, the evacuation plan, they were trying to approve it at this meeting, they were unable to, the fire marshal was, was very, very occupied with an ordinance that she's trying to pass through Woodside Fire Protection, and was unable to provide some updates that they, the committee wanted to have before they approved it, so they are looking to approve the evacuation plan in May, their May meeting. And it will come to us from staff after that.
Any, any other liaison verbal reports that, Mary, thanks for including your written ones, any other updates?
Okay, we read yours, so they're good. Thank you. No, no, it's great. You're, you're the, you're the, you get the A, you're the A student on.
I, I try and do my best.
That's good.
Try and do my best.
So I think we're looking for other oral.
Yeah, I was going to say that I attended this, to the airport, uh, subcommittee.
Thank you for doing that.
Something else, is all I can say.
Thank you to you both.
I even, I never even corrected them, they called me Judith all the way through, and I never even corrected them.
Round. Yeah, Mary, Mary stood in when I had a conflict, thank you, Mary. Greatly appreciated.
Supposed to be here. But actually, the fun part of that was, they're talking about virtual, vertical, vertical airports, which will service all of our little towns, like, right now, we're, right here on Ford Field, we can have a vertical airport, so we can commute to so we can commute all over, all, all over the world, right from our own, our vertical airport.
Yeah, it, it's pretty fascinating, but acronym thick. One thing, I am getting more reports from town residents on nighttime air traffic noise. And I'm now got a better understanding of some of the reporting that's been going on, so that'll be something I start digging into with the appropriate contact there, but thank you for doing that, Mary.
I noticed that you were on the working group, so the technical work.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm glad I didn't put my name in that ring.
Um, if there aren't any others, I will add the update from the Hawthorns meeting that was held on Sunday, the 24th of March in the rain. It was, we had a, a good turnout despite the weather, it was a three-hour meeting held onsite where, you know, the POG reviewed all of the alternatives that have been, that are being considered for both the entry and the parking. And added a, I guess it's a there, it's, it's, it's option number seven or eight at this point, but really, at the end of the day, they're looking at three sites to, so to refresh your memory, the two different entrances are across from Roberts, or what is the historical entrance, which is further down by Nat Horst. And then the parking locations that are being debated are the two original ones, which are parking, you know, right at the historical entrance along Alpine Road, or further back up within that kind of meadow bowl. And then the, the new one that was introduced is consideration of parking across the street from Roberts. So that is now a third one, you know, going in the entrance that's existing right there, and basically hanging a right and having parking right there. And so tho, those are the three that are being considered. You know, the, the trade-offs, of course, is, you know, not wanting from, from, you know, safety in terms of access across from Roberts versus the historical, everybody, there seems to be broad consensus that there's significant safety concerns further down the road at the historical entrance. further down the road at the historical entrance. Then the, the next is the ecological impact. It's considered, you know, less disruptive to have the parking lot along Alpine Road at either of those two place locations versus up at, up at the meadow. And so it's really the trade-off of the ecological impact relative to, you know, the appearance and the aesthetic reasons of it being right on Alpine Road. So those are, that's kind of the debate that's ongoing. The next meeting is.
Sarah, before, but before we leave that one, is there any discussion of the scenic corridor?
Yep, that's been discussed. That's part of, that's a, a more eloquent way of, of representing the discussion around the aesthetic aspect. So yes, that has been part of it. And so basically where we are in the process is the last meeting of the POG is, I, I think it's Saturday, June 13th. The POG will then make a recommendation to MidPenn's internal Natural Resources Committee. That recommendation might be, you know, here are the three options, you figure it out, or it might be, you know, actual recommendations. I have a feeling it'll, it'll be at least two things is my sense, is my, my gut of where they'll end up, but we'll see. As a reminder, I'm not a voting body. I'm just a, an observer in the process. And after their, MidPenn's in, Natural Resources entity reviews it, they, that entity then makes a recommendation to the board, MidPenn's Board. MidPenn's Board will then hold a study session on it. Then they will ask the town council to hold a study session only on it. I think the timing for that would be in the fall. Then after that, it would go back to MidPenn, and that's when they would start their formal process of making a decision, voting on something at MidPenn. And then once they do, of course, it would come back to the town and go through the town's formal process. So we're still a ways away. But that's where we are in the process.
Sarah, did they do a straw poll? Like, when I attended the prior meeting, they?
No.
They really?
It was raining, you know, that we were, yeah, no. I don't think it was their intent to begin with. They probably will when we're back in the offices at the June meeting, is my guess.
Okay.
Sarah, I have two questions.
Yes.
Which I hope will be relevant. But one is, was your implication that there's a good, there's a reasonable chance it would be open in 2025 summer?
No, no way. It's a 10-year process. I think we're in year three.
Wow.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm not holding my breath on that one for sure. The other thing is, can you, can you, or, or should you tell us again why, why and how the Los Tranco side of that piece of property is being withdrawn from all considerations and planning at this point?
Their engineer that looks at traffic and safety is, would said, said it's, and the sightlines are not safe, and he would not sign on to a project with that location.
Well, it, 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 I understand that. The other part of it is that we're not, they're not including that in any kind of planning trails or any, any of the other planning. So that would be, that's like 20 years out, 20, before we'll ever know what's happening with that piece of property.
Oh, you're talking about the historical complex? I'm sorry. I thought you were talking about, I misunderstood.
I'm not talking about entrances. I'm talking about just the, the big concept of when, when that timeline begins for the, that section.
Yeah. What they've said all along is that's going to be a separate process, and it will not have a POG. It's not going to go through the same process as this. Not all of their properties and development projects have a POG. I think it's just a handful. So.
Yeah, okay. But I guess so many of the easy solutions are on that side. Anyway, thank you. Thank you for your work with that.
All right. Any, any other liaison updates? All right, I'll move to public comment. I see one hand up.
Great, good evening. This is Caroline Vertonghen. Can you hear me?
Yes. Hi, Caroline.
So in regards to the airport, this is a big issue. And yes, it's not just the evening flights. We hear more flights coming in, in the morning. We, I hope that you understand, we had a major problem several years ago where the houses on the higher elevations were trembling. We could see the belly of the airplane. We don't want to go there. So this is a very serious problem. We don't want to repeat it. And I also want to bring up an issue that I tried to bring up at the last town council, but there was no communication from the public after the liaison report. There was an issue that was brought up at the BPTS meeting in March, where the Public Works Director said that the town council, I'm talking about the attorney, had mentioned that Potola Valley was not mandated to have safe routes to school. We always had safe routes to school. We have a map. CGAC has a map. We have the map on our town in several committees. And so I would like to have more clarifications why suddenly we're not endorsing safe routes to school. It's very problematic. And then in regards to the Hawthorns, I was at that meeting, and I would recommend everybody to listen to that meeting because this was an example of a constructive meeting. So you had the public who could express their concerns. And then you had for two hours conversation among board members. Because they have different data. They don't have the data from the residents. And then at the end, we had again, the residents speak up. It's, it's a communication of getting data together, misperception of information that was received. And so we were very happy to understand that the board members were considering to reduce the parking from 50 to 30. This is very important. The main issue that has not been solved is the safe routes to school. So if indeed they will use that entrance, which is the safest, I understand, across from Roberts, we have to find solutions to make it work for both our community and for that new project. But the traffic consultant has a different idea. He thinks that everything will have to come from the town. And I would encourage you to listen to the Trails Committee. We have been discussing this. To the PPTS Committee, we have been discussing this.
Caroline?
In detail.
You've gone over the three minutes. I'm sorry.
That's fine, but listen to your comments. Don't cut us off like you have been doing.
I'm sorry. In fairness to people who follow the rules, I have to, to follow the rules for everybody. Thank you. I don't see any other hands raised. And so with that, I would close the liaison reports and we can be adjourned.
Motion to adjourn.
Is there a second?
There was.
All right. Thanks, guys. Thank you very much. Thank you, Adrian.